Alright, so it's February 21st. We're having a workshop of the West Side Planning Board with Max Johnstone from Mid Coast Council of Governments. First we'll call the order, establish a quorum. We require as a planning board to have three members present to have a quorum. We have four this evening, so, sorry, five this evening, so we have a quorum. We're all set. I think people will do introductions, planning board members around the room.
Sure, I'm Jim Williams.
I'm Gabe Woodley.
Darlene Estera.
Jerry Mitchell.
Jay Wallace.
And then we have Carly Perry and the town clerk.
Sudan Anderson.
I'm Max Johnstone, I'm with the Council of Governments.
Kathy Laura Allen.
Kathy Mavelin. So what we've done is invited Max Johnstone from the Mid Coast Council of Governments to come and discuss with us the new LD 2003 ruling that's come from the state. Max is well versed in this. He has been helping the town, working with the town on the comprehensive plan. After the comprehensive plan is done, he's gonna move on and help the planning board do some ordinance revisions and updates. So it made perfect sense to ask him to come in here and talk for the night about the LD 2003. And I'm gonna actually let you explain what the LD 2003 is if you like.
Sure, and I'm glad you made the difference because now that it's a new legislative session in the year, LD 2003 is gonna be the name going out soon. And we have to qualify its actual title
Okay.
and act to implement the recommendations of the commission to increase housing opportunities in Maine by studying zoning and land use restrictions. Let's go with former LD 2003.
Let's do that.
So are they amending 2003 in this session or?
Uh, no, so that legislation was passed last year. I think we signed it in April, it was signed in April. And we, towns have had, towns will have until July 1st of this year to implement the rulemaking items that everyone hopefully got in front of them.
Yep.
And I'm not aware of any amendments right now. Supposedly there's something about trying to delay it or requiring towns of certain sizes to only implement it by July 1st. It's still a bit up in the air. There's actually gonna be a public hearing on March 1st, I believe.
Yes.
March 1st.
One o'clock.
One o'clock. I'm gonna be attending that and giving my thoughts on some of these things, such as you should be implementing a delay since it's ridiculous that we've got these rulemakings and towns are gonna have a June deadline or some towns are gonna have a March meeting and are gonna miss the deadline. And to see if there's any other comments made by the public. And there is a deadline for public hearings by March 13th, so if there might be some changes to this, but it's not gonna be substantial.
Yeah. Yeah, can you just tell us exactly what, I mean, a lot of us know what it is.
So the intent is, was to address some affordable housing methods, trying to address density bonuses and trying to allow certain uses in areas that allow single-family homes so that people would be more encouraged to do some more developments in communities. This is based on some work that a housing consultant did for the city of Portland and they decided to make it a statewide thing. So we all know how long that works out. And that's why when I go over some of these items, yeah, two throat clearings. So when I go over-
You're just the messenger, right?
I'm the messenger.
Max is here to help us.
That's what I had to-
That's right.
We're gonna be nice-
We know you're just the messenger.
We're gonna be nice to Max, he's here to help us.
We still may react, but we know you're the messenger.
I know, as long as you know that, then go ahead and do it. Because I held a workshop on this back in, I think, November before the rulemaking was even a thing, going over the guidance documents that actually you're holding there. And there were a lot of people who were confused why they had to do a lot of these things and what sets have made to do a lot of these things. So when we're going through them and people are saying, "Why are we doing that?" Just keep in mind, this is what the state recommended through the commission that made that book for all of us. So should I just go through page by page or just?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have some basic questions. I think our biggest problem is if we have to implement this for our ordinances for this year, our town meeting date where we usually incorporate ordinances is May 16, which to get it through the lawyer and the selectmen backing it off the lawyer or the selectmen and then the board to do any changes, we're talking about we have to have this done in three weeks sort of thing. So we're just trying to make sure that we are prepared and that we know what we need to do so we can hurry up and do it. And I think it's great that you guys are here to know what we're up against as far as timeline to get this done. So yeah, it's, how much, does it affect us?
So I can go over the big items that towns are gonna be dealing with. And a good chunk of this is more or less comprehensive with them. And some towns already addressed, and I'm saying a lot of towns, so I don't know exactly what your ordinance says. But a lot of towns already have some version of this already in their ordinance, so for you it's just adjusting it to be sure it's well incorporated. For example, accessory dwelling units, some towns already have accessory apartments. And for this, it's just making sure you're referencing accessory dwelling units. And I would recommend having a maximum size limit because with how the definition is written out, someone could make the argument that, "Yeah, I live in this 1,000 square foot home and I may want a builder. A 20,000 square foot building, that's my accessory dwelling unit." And that language does open up that door.
But it has 190 square foot minimums.
Right.
Right, on a maximum.
So-
Do... I know that with the comp plan, you go through and we have things in there and then you have asterisks, asterisked things that are physically required. Does all of this language that's in this handout have to be in our ordinance? Or is it we sort of have to put some of it in there or is it?
Has to be addressed or be intended for.
Okay, so pretty much has to be in there.
Pretty much.
Okay.
There's some flexibility to what you can do, like the accessory dwelling, you can put in the maximum size limit. And I think, they even have it in here? It does. Or like short-term rental units, some towns want to activate, some towns don't because it's a big topic that for such a short amount of time, you don't wanna talk about right now.
Do you foresee this being pushed?
I mean, well this is-
On the timeline?
By July 1st.
It's being extended?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to see what the public here, what is going on at the public hearing. It, I encourage towns to speak with their representative and telephone. We are facing this deadline, we are concerned.
Okay.
And I'm just trying to have towns prepare just in case.
True.
And even if it's not implemented by that day, I would just say be aware of these rules so that if someone does come to you and say, "Well, we didn't update the ordinance, we just don't have to follow the state rules," you shouldn't be caught flagfiling it.
Yeah. And I think code enforcement has already said that there are people waiting to come. I didn't get any more details than that, but-
Probably.
They're gonna preempt it with a July 1 or an application. Awesome.
Perfect.
So, okay. So all of this has to be in there?
Yes.
And we can be stricter but not less strict, same as usual ordinances?
More leaners. So like, so like, for example, you have to allow one accessory dwelling that doesn't get impacted by the density. But you could say you are gonna allow three accessory dwelling units if you want, without no impact to the density.
Right, so, right, so I think we're saying this.
Yeah, same thing, I think, sorry.
Wait, so you couldn't say a minimum square feet of 150?
No.
So you have to-
Has to be 100.
Okay. Right, but we can add a maximum?
Or, or no, I'm sorry. In your example, you'd be right, or you, the town could say 150, which would be-
You can't say 110.
Right.
You can't say 400 or 210 or 185.
Right.
We can make it smaller.
Right.
Plus to a math.
Yeah, right.
We can always be more strict or more lenient. Well. Anyway, I gotta check.
It's always buried on top. So the definitions don't, I don't think I need to worry too much about with this group. The definitions, other than the accessory dwelling, everything is pretty standard.
We'll check, make sure we have them. Question for you. We have structure in our book, I know that we do. If it does not say those exact words and how it's defined as 38 MRS, do we have to, can we add that sentence in addition to what we have in the book?
Yes.
Or do we have to replace?
You can add it.
Okay, so you can add these things.
Well, and, as I said, another example is for accessory dwelling. There is a town that has something very similar to that. So they have their accessory apartment definition, but then included accessory dwelling is said, "Please refer to accessory apartment."
Gotcha.
So should I just jump into eligibility? This is general group.
How many other questions about the definitions? Okay.
So I'll jump into the eligibility for density bonus. So this is focusing on the voluntary affordability item. So you would have to allow in any area that has multifamily dwelling, these requirements for affordable housing structure. And it would also have to be what your current comp plan, the one we've done in 2005 that we're updating right now, six, seven?
Six, yeah.
Whatever that has defines a growth area and has multifamily dwelling units allowed would be applicable to these items. So that's why I've kept the comprehensive plan in these areas and you've got the land use sections. The growth area is the important item to talk about because those areas are gonna be impacted the most by this. So you're actually in a bit of a fortunate time where your comp plan's been updated and you can really influence the growth area while this is being implemented.
But will that happen before July 1st?
I hope so. I hope my comp plan can be done, I hope our comp plan can be done by then.
So you're saying that in areas defined as growth area in the comp plan that's going to be finished before July 1st?
It would be whatever your most recently approved comprehensive plan is. If we don't get the comp plan done by then, it would be your 2007.
That'll make it complicated, okay. And then any zone that a multi-unit is allowed?
Yes.
It's considered a growth.
No, so in your ordinance, you have multifamily dwelling as allowed in certain areas. So I assume it's not allowed in the, whatever you have, Wing Farm. That's Wing Farmers or Culture Park.
Wing Farm, yeah.
I assume multifamily is not allowed in areas that are more of an industrial commercial park. So that may be a growth area, but because you don't allow multifamily dwellings there, someone can't do affordable housing or those long-term four, they'll be eligibility item.
Gotcha.
If that makes sense. But you might have multifamily allowed, let's say, along Berry's Mills. Let's just say that. You allow all the way down to the Pennsyl Park. But none of that's in your growth area. So you're still allowing multifamily housing, but it can't be this affordability density bonus. It has to fit in that overall.
Multifamily housing is allowed in business and commercial and mobile home park, not to exceed four dwelling units per structure. It's also one, two-family or one duplex dwelling on a separate lot is allowed in every zone except for the urban development park and the resource protection office.
So if that's correct, that means, so the other thing is the multifamily dwelling has to be changed to three units instead of four. But from what you have here, that means this affordability item would only be allowed in those two districts.
Oh, only in the two?
Yes.
Not, not where it says duplex is allowed?
No, this is just multifamily.
The mobile home park?
Assuming that's in the growth area.
And the business and commercial?
If those are in the growth-
I'm not sure where the growth area is in the comp plan.
I think it is in, I know that the business park was in the growth area, I remember that.
But see, Wing Farm is not, the UDP is where Wing Farm is. Business and commercial is all over commercial in town. So it's pretty big space.
I have a few examples on my top some.
And I didn't wanna get into weeds, I was just thinking this might help.
No, no.
So that's just exactly what's in here.
No, it's a good point.
Who's page is that on?
Uh, 22, and I'm bad, I'm in my old book because it's marked tabbed, whatever you want. So it's probably 22, 23. You don't need to include these. So not to exceed three dwelling units per structure. So that's even more less lenient than what we were before. It's more than before, less than you. Why would it become more than three when we have a comp plan?
That's just what they proved at the state level. Let me see if I have-
You know what, and I, it's-
It's gonna be confusing, the people coming in, you know, for John to interpret and so forth.
So-
I think it's gonna be a process, yeah. It's gonna take us a while to work through this, so.
So for what I have in the growth areas, this was approved in the 2005 comp plan. There's what you have called a village mixed use zone, the urban development park zone slash Wing Farm.
Yep.
The mobile home overlay zone. And the special industrial and transportation overlay zones.
That's where the transportation is. So does it say where the zone is?
What was the first one?
It was a mixed village area, which I don't think you have that.
We don't have that.
So-
Does it count because it's in the old comp plan but it's not on, but it's not on the zoning map? I mean, how do you know where that is?
Because you provided that in the previous plan.
Put it on there?
So there was this area right up here and then the area along Group 1. So you had-
Oh, that's all the commercial now anyway.
So those are your growth areas. Everything else you define transitional or rural. It is. Although that could change depending on the comp plan itself.
But the, I mean, realistically, the comp plan is on track to be done.
By the-
By it.
By the deadline.
By the deadline. Unless we hit a hiccup, we're almost at the town.
Well-
Or the town votes a down.
Or the town votes a down. That'd be heartbreaking, but so-
All right.
So for this affordable housing item that we're talking about, the, it would have to be a designated growth area, which we've gone over as two areas, your industrial area and your commercial area. It has to be in an area which allows multifamily dwellings as of July 1st, 2023, which assuming this ordinance doesn't change, it'd just be those two districts.
So business and commercial and mobile park.
Which you also highlighted were the growth areas in the comp plan. So don't forget that, but you want-
Because I think the growth areas where business and commercial is now anyways, so they're probably the same thing.
Right.
Okay.
So-
Got it.
The third item is that it has to be on, and they have to prove that it's on a good septic and water system. So they have to provide written verification that their system would be able to handle their units. So this can't be someone who just says, "I'm in these two areas. I'm building 30 units right now," or anything else. They actually have to show that it's gonna be able to be handled, like you normally do.
And it says public septic and water, but that could be a private public. And there's a lot of those.
And that's one of the public comments that I have to make because from what they kept calling during the guidance phase, they said, "No, it's only municipal or equivalent." But it does say there, "Other comparable sewer system." So it could be this massive leach field that can support that number. And that would be a sewer syst, uh, septic system that would be able to handle.
Right, so like right now, Green Acres has its own large septic system.
So the project that came before the board that wanted to build those-
On the corner?
Mm-hmm.
The 50?
Yep. This would now pass.
They would have to prove that they had the septic and the water, yeah.
They could, because they were putting that in the center of the-
So that's got town water, so water would be easy, but it's the septic, I think, that would be the-
You know, what would kill that one would be the shore fund, just like Anthony's. He doesn't have the shore fund.
I don't know, does this override that?
No, because you have, like, you have to prove it can do the septic, so the septic laws are separate.
Oh, I see.
So if you can get with septic on it because of that reason, you couldn't do it.
Oh, all right.
And I believe it does say, "Septic system must be verified as adequate by local plumbing inspector pursuant to 38 MRS 4221. And plans must be prepared by licensed site evaluation officers to the subsurface wastewater responsible," as you mentioned.
So Jerry's a septic.
I'm really tired of Jerry.
I don't know what the title is, design septic fields and that. There's a special rule about having shore, if you're on shore, the shore in front of you has to be so much per unit, right?
It's the gallon of water.
Yes, and so that makes it difficult.
I should probably also quickly say this. These are all not applicable to the shoreline zone. So we're gonna get into a case soon where if some homes could build up to three or four units, they still will have to follow the shore zones. They're not exactly meant to that.
So, yeah, they have to be 75 feet back. What do you say that they can't do it near the shore at all? Or just that they have to be 75 feet back?
They still have to be, they still have to follow the shore lines.
Okay.
And meet the septic and meet the water.
And meet the density bonuses and meet the density requirements.
So what's the density requirement then?
So whatever, do you have like minimum lot size per?
Yeah, we have two acre and three acre.
Per unit or is it just?
Per unit.
So they would just have to follow that per unit?
So you'd have to have either three acres?
Well, so there's residential and rural residential. One is two acres, one is three acres. And then commercial is an acre. And then the second unit is a half an acre and the third unit is a half an acre. So if you had two acres, you can really put three units on it.
But on a residential lot, if someone has three acres, they can't add a unit?
Correct, it's one unit.
Except an accessory dwelling.
You could accessory, one accessory dwelling.
One accessory dwelling.
Per three acre parcel, or for whatever parcel there.
Right. Per, per the density. So if you had an eight acre lot? You could put two buildings and an accessory unit, right? Or is it two accessory units?
I think that will come up, that'll get a bit later. I'll finish off the, well, I jumped in the shoreline zone. So just to wrap up this density bonus for the affordable housing, if someone does come along and they can prove that they meet the septic, that they meet the water, they can, they are in the growth area and they are in a multifamily dwelling district, they would also have to have a covenant to guarantee that the units they are providing for 30 years would match one of these two housing criteria. So if it's, if it's going to be rental, it has to be at or below 80% of the local area median income at the time of initial occupancy. This is on page, is it number one? Five, this is on page five, section 2C.
It's the one that NAS ends with.
Long term, the phone going.
Yes, okay. Or B, if these are going to be owner occupied houses, it has to be 120% of the local, of the local and area median income.
Sorry, I don't even know where you are.
I don't know. It's just this.
Yep, you're on it.
Oh, you're on it.
I'm on it, okay.
Yeah, it's a-
Oh, that's the bonus, got it, sorry.
Yep.
I don't have any numbers on these pages.
So-
Okay.
So they have to show all that. If they can, then they will get two incentives. The first is that they will have dwelling unit density at least 2.5 times the base density that is otherwise allowed in that location. So-
So it's a two acre lot.
That would be five units.
No, it's two and a half times one, right?
Oh, I thought you said two acres, sorry.
It's a two acre lot which allows for one unit, for one unit.
So if you have a minimum lot size of one acre, 2.5 units could be created for a acre.
That's only in commercial?
If, if they meet the growth area items. If they meet all these requirements for affordable housing.
They're getting a density bonus.
No, I got that.
Yeah, there it is.
So, all right, so there's a two acre minimum.
Yes.
For a lot.
Sure.
So if you have a two acre lot and you can have one unit on it, then this two and a half times is two and a half units.
And would allow 2.5 times the number of units that would typically be allowed there.
So it's two and a half times one, which is two and a half? Okay.
Yeah.
So what's the half unit? It's not a half unit, it's not, isn't it?
Only one door.
They watch, they watch it by the round out or down.
Round up or down. Do we get a choice on rounding up or down?
At least 2.5. So the developer could round down if they wanted to.
But they wanna round, they wanna round it, or did I have three units in that scenario?
Actually, that's a good question.
Yeah, I'm asking, can we round it up or can we round it down? I would round it down.
I mean, if you want to round it so that you don't have to deal with this 0.5, you could change it to three times, but then it's the, but-
You can't go to two.
You can't, you have to meet at least-
You have to meet there two and a half.
I get that, but you meet two and a half.
But that's why-
But what we're, it counts for, right, you have multiple acres, right?
Right, if you, right, and you end up with five, you end up with 10. But I guess my question again is if they end up at two and a half and they say, "Well, we won't round up until up to three," do we have an option of saying, "No, you're at two."
That's what I can ask for the public comment.
Okay, perfect.
I mean, my immediate response is no, I mean, you know, you only get one door. Point nine, my answer is no unit. Unless you have a whole unit, it wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, and I get it when they have multiples and it turns into five or four or whatever. But if you were to automatically change this from two and a half to three, then all of a sudden, you're 39, 369, 12, it's the two and a half, five.
So I will get a response to that.
But every, every parcel in this town has the ability for one accessory dwelling at this point?
Yes, if it allows a single-family home, it has to allow an accessory dwelling.
Right, so anything can have two.
As long as it meets the septic.
Yes, it also has to meet the septic.
But yes, you're gonna be busy. It's not a bad thing.
So the second big bonus, oh, I'm sorry. If the fractional results occur when calculating the density bonus in the subsection, the number of units is rounded down to the nearest total. So there.
Yes.
That's why I get around reading to the dimes there.
There you go.
The number of, okay, but the second density bonus is that no more than two on-street parking spaces for every three dwelling units of the affordable housing development. So you're getting rid of a third of required parking for affordable housing projects. If someone's coming in and saying, "I wanna build 12 affordable units and they need all the requirements," they're going to be required to have eight parking spaces.
That seems wrong.
Oh, you have to give a rest of the cars, for 12.
That's always the question, that's always the question I'm getting.
But if you check on remakes, there's not many cars over there.
If you have two people living in one dwelling and have two cars, all of a sudden you're at 48 cars versus eight cars.
I can see how this would work in Portland because there isn't much parking and people have a bus system. In town here, I don't know how that would work. You can look here, but you can't have a car in a car.
Or if you're gonna sit there.
How are you gonna get in the store?
Those are gonna be decreased living income. So I think some of these people may not have cars, like maybe.
And so far, these are word for word questions that I've been getting from what you two are saying.
I got you, okay.
Now, you could still have something like a standard saying, to prove how people are going to get around without cars, if you would like, that's not really an issue. And in what- That's not really an issue, and what people are going to do to address overflow parking, but in case there is that concern that someone only has eight parking spaces and everyone does have at least one car.
Right, because the developer may not want to come in and provide enough parking for each unit, and this says that they don't have to.
Well, we can maybe more strict.
You could have those, you could have those, you could have those additional standard items if you would like, as long as they're not filed through regulatory. But this, but this is you saying, you're still concerned about traffic concerns, and you're still concerned about how to address that type of.
Where you put the other twelve cars, does that mean, so you take at least one car per unit, or, I mean, that's more less strict, that's less strict than a.
And it's you just outlining the regular plan, just like other state items.
Yeah, I mean, runs can not have the buses to go around.
We don't have here, we don't have anything here, so I would think that would be very discriminatory to the person living in the apartment.
So those are just some items you could consider when adopting this as well? You're not getting rid of these standard items, but you are saying, from the town's perspective, how are people going to address the overflow parking? If there isn't, and how are people gonna get around if they are not going to be required to park there?
Well, and we don't have, we're onto a taxi, we don't have, and we just don't have.
Just have.
So, are there any other questions for the affordable housing unit density section, before we move on to dwelling unit allows?
Nancy, are you saying that it would be some kind of requirement when they come, sorry, before the planning board, that the planning board could have. Could address the issue of parking prior to them getting their access permit?
That could be a standard you have in the ordinance.
So they could, the planning board could say, a minimum requirement of one car per unit with four guest spots, or something that you, that you have, no?
No, the, this parking requirement would strictly be, if someone meets all these requirements, they can only, they only have to do two spaces per three units.
I thought you just said it could be.
Maybe, yeah.
What you could do is have more generalized standards, so how are people going to address overflow, or how are people going to address less parking?
So how do you address that in overflow?
Well, somebody may be coming for you and say, well, we've got four units, but there's only gonna be two cars because three people, I mean, they're gonna have to prove somehow that you.
And this is also another question that I'm going to be going to the state to ask. We have a lot of rural communities, and the first thing they ask when they look at the parking requirement is, how the heck are the third, the people who don't get a required parking spot, how are they gonna get around?
Or what do you do with it, with the overflow?
Or what happens when they all do have.
Park on the street, and then that creates a.
And our street's not wide enough, yeah.
The answer to that would be if the town is of a certain size, and this would kick in. But if it was, if it was small, under five thousand people or whatever, then it wouldn't, and that would be the answer in a lot of things.
And that's why there's some people who are trying to push this to only go to certain towns, because those towns do have transportation.
Right.
That the entire thing only goes to certain towns, or just the parking?
Just, well, a good chunk of this, pretty much.
That this actually would come to us if we didn't meet the size criteria, the entire, right?
Right, well, as, as they say, there's different murmurs of what's happening up at this state, I'm, I'm just trying to come through what they have right now in front of me.
We're gonna prepare for the worst, but we have to have this ready.
So. Shall we move on to the. Yes, the section that requires these counties to have multiple dwelling, okay, there, it's just multiple. So this would be just looking at the entire town right now, this isn't wherever you allow a single family dwelling units, and places that do have growth areas are going to differ from the rest of the town. So, and again, septic and water have to be properly addressed, that's just standard. So, in these growth areas that do allow single family housing, if there's an undeveloped law. Its municipality must allow up to four dwelling units per lot, if the law is located in an area which allows housing and is in the growth area. And I think the guidance document has, shows what that could be. And this can be a mix of principal buildings and accessory dwellings. If, is there any question on that so far that, that usually does apply to us?
Yeah, and again, this public special district or other centrally managed water system, and the same thing as far as sewer system, can still be. Private, public system, a big system, where like mobile parks and stuff out.
Yep.
It's probably the private public systems.
I'm just making fun, that, this is.
They're interesting rules.
Throughout the whole thing, so.
Yeah, so. So if a lot is undeveloped, but is in a growth area, it can have up to four units. If the lot does not contain existing dwelling units, but it's not in a growth area, then it must allow up to two dwelling units on the lot. For your minimum lot size. And that can be, again, just two dwelling units, or one main structure and a separate one.
So a vacant lot?
Yeah.
Just land, not a, can that two units turn out for that?
Four.
Well.
Two if it's in an area, two, two throughout the entire town westbound, four if it's in a growth area that we've gone up with. And that's something that code enforcement officers would just have to be sure of, um, just out of curiosity, or just, if someone wants to just build a house, is that a planning board item, is that a code enforcement officer item?
That is code enforcement unless it's near the shoreline, or on a non-conforming lot.
Okay.
That's strictly code enforcement, so that begs, that strikes a really good question, with all these rules, should we have all of this come before the board?
Should what come before?
Anyone who's trying to do multi-unit anything.
Um.
Because it's so complicated.
You can create some rules if you would like, um.
From the beginning.
It, so. It gets tricky, because part of what they don't, what they try and push is that you don't try and have rules that specifically discriminate against these types of developments. But you can have a process for, and the standards to do it, like the accessory dwelling units is somewhere in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that can be a code enforcement officer item, that can be a planning board if you like, if a certain number of units have been built.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at, like, the guy who listed two is fifty units, I don't think that that should go just to the code enforcement, because that's a big development, that's.
That, that requires, that's a.
Multi-family.
Well, anything over threes, anything three and above is subdivision anyway.
Right, so it'd be a subdivision plan where we'd have to, they'd have to come here.
So.
Three or more?
A three apartment building?
Three, more than three. No, it's three, the number's three.
For a subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
If you're splitting up the lot, but the state did change the subdivision rule back in twenty nineteen, so if someone's building an apartment building, that's not a subdivision.
So it doesn't go by units anymore, it goes by?
It goes by the lots, yeah.
Lots only, okay.
I was, uh, I think I had, uh, great news to some other towns recently.
Yeah, no, I did not know that.
Yeah.
Alright, so apartment buildings are no longer considered.
Subdivisions.
Okay.
But still have to meet all the requirements, so if they put in a fifteen unit apartment building, septic has to be able to handle.
Right, right, but it doesn't have to go through subdivision.
Right, but it still goes to the planning board, correct?
Right.
Because multi-family is a planning board item.
Right, yeah, well, that's what I'm asking, is should all of these multi-families be like.
I say that, yeah.
That was the one kind of question.
Multi-family, I would have already said goes to the planning board before these rules.
Yeah, I don't know, is it specific in there, and so is that? I mean.
Isn't that what this chart says?
It doesn't say it has to go to the planning board, it just says whether it's a one or not.
Oh.
That, that's true, yeah.
Sometimes, but you say, it should say who can approve it, not us.
We are gonna be ordering changes.
I would say, even before we do the comp plan or anything, maybe just quickly put in, who the planning board should approve of certain big items.
Well, we have that, but I don't think the multi-family is in the list, it's what the code enforcement does versus the kind of like, I'll find it.
Well.
We'll update that.
So. Other, so other than the undeveloped lots, if a lot contains one existing dwelling unit, the municipality must allow up to two additional units. And these can either be in the structure, detached from the structure, or one each.
So now you go from one to three?
Yep. If it already contains a dwelling unit.
So as long as you have one structure, you can add a three?
Yep. Which paragraph do you want out?
C.
That's B, C, yeah.
I don't use the ones. Um.
And if the lot already contains two dwelling units, then no other dwelling units can be allowed, unless.
So if you have one, you can go to three, but if you have two, you have to stay at two?
Yep.
That's interesting, can you add an accessory to it?
From how, from how I read this, once you have two, even if it's one principal, one accessory, you can't go any higher.
So no additional dwelling units can be built on that lot unless allowed under a local municipal ordinance, huh?
But that's another public comment question that has to be addressed, because that has caused some confusion.
Municipality may allow more units than the minimum number required to be allowed on a lot.
So you could decide not to have a two dwelling unit cap, you could decide to say, somebody can go up to five units on the lot, before we say no.
Wow.
So.
It seems like you're being penalized if you had two versus going to three versus one, right, and three.
I think part of it is, they, the accessory dwelling units is probably the reason, and they want, the other intent is they want towns to build on, on built areas. Like encourage developers to look at someplace that maybe didn't make sense if there was only one unit allowed, but now they have three units.
Trying to get rid of the sprawl and make it more dense.
Yeah.
That's what they're doing, yeah.
And the municipality may allow more units than the minimum number of units required to be on a lot, so you can change the number to allow more units.
You could say that every lot can go up to three, even if you had two, you could have one to make it.
Well, I assume you'd wanna stick with the minimum for now. And the guidance document does have a good sheet to outline what's required.
From a twenty thousand feet, does it make sense to reduce our two acre minimum and three acre minimum?
Hmm.
It sounds.
So, why would you reduce the requirement?
Build more housing.
Yeah, with more housing, instead of having half three acres, you go to two, now it's at you've got fifty percent more.
You can. Yep, you, you can. Um.
I wouldn't jump off and put that forward yet.
No.
Yeah, I.
I think you'd have a hard time having people accept that in this town.
Yeah, it would be hard to get that passed.
They're not gonna wanna accept this either, I would say, this is an option.
Right, if you give them an option, they're gonna push back.
Like I've already had, I was working with a different town on the, on different ordinance changes to address dimensional standards, and the moment this came on the radar, I was like, well. Now we gotta keep our, these dimensional standards, because they're the only safeguard we have.
So you're saying that we should try and get this, the multi-unit, multi-family language into our ordinance?
I would.
Along with the June, the June meeting?
Have to.
Yeah, yeah.
As a standalone ordinance change, in advance of our regular ordinance change?
Yes, I would, I would focus on this first, just so you can prepare for what's gonna come. And then if some, if you wanna reduce the dimensional standards, or if we are going to do this huge revision after our plan is done, that should be done later, when you've had some time to see how this is.
Well, the, the multi families will protect the town that's now a, a definition, and you stipulation on how to engage it versus we don't have it right now.
Yeah, right now, multi families is not underneath planning board. In here.
So we just move that as an ordinance change?
Does it have to be an ordinance change, or could?
Say it again?
Does, does it have to be an ordinance change, or can that just simply be administrative decision with the, with the, uh. Job described, single family homes with a code enforcement, and multi-family homes have code of planning board?
Any, any changes to any of that is within the ordinance, which has to be done by town vote, we're not even allowed to change.
Okay.
A letter, a letter in here, without going through, um.
Just asking.
Yeah, and it's, we should certainly consider as a, something as we bring this forward to the town, that's, we put that in there, to protect the planning board and the, and, because it's all coming forward. That, I know we're trying to wait for the all the ordinances to be looked at, but I think that maybe we should maybe prioritize and protect.
That's all of these.
Do you have, do you have, um, samples, ordinances?
That's what this is.
Yeah, the rulemaking document is pretty much the copy paste that some towns should be using.
Okay.
I have done some work in other towns, but it's not going to be a good one-on-one match, since a lot of them just have single units already, and I have to say. A major table to say this and that, and, um, it's being flagged, it's not. So, just moving on to dwelling, you are allowed to either do a prohibition or an allowance on lots where a dwelling is in existence, but is that going down in terms of empty lots? So you can be flexible on these dwelling units that are allowed if you wanna have something for demolition.
Um, I think what we have now is that, well, it's really on the shoreline, it's not everywhere.
That's fine.
The typical, if it's been down for a year, they can't rebuild it, sort of thing, but that really doesn't apply to this, I guess, it's just a shoreline.
And then for the dimensional and setback requirements, you just can't have any minimum lot sizes or setbacks that are more restrictive after that first unit. So if you have a district that requires one acre per unit, it has to be at least one acre going forward, you can't say the first unit's one acre, second unit's gonna be five acres, third unit's gonna be twenty acres.
Right, I gotcha.
And if you have a setback of, say, fifty feet from the road and from the side, then it has to be fifty feet from the road and the side for these new units as well. But they can't be in the courses to go to the sides.
So we don't have to reduce the standards to accommodate a structure?
Right, but we could, you could, you, no, we're not, we could, you could.
Right, you just can't increase the setbacks.
Right.
You might have to, and right now they're twenty.
So you may have to.
A second unit, a lot of these lots with setbacks as they sit today. Not that bad.
Um, and then water wastewater, where the closing units has to prove that they will have sufficient overflow water, and they'll also have a septic system that can handle the units. Same as the Florida Ohio ones, I've talked about earlier. So then, in adopting ordinance, they can just, this is, um, item C on the next page. In adopting ordinance, the municipality may establish an application and permitting process for dwelling units, which you already have referred in the process, but you can change it to however you'd like.
We're gonna need to make new applications in reverse specific for this, at least.
You may impose fines for violations of building, site plan, and zoning, and this is most of the towns that are really behind on this. Um, so if you have a fine structure, then you can do that, and utility requirements for dwelling units. So you could probably, again, I'll have to see what the public comment says, but if someone's maybe close to the water and sewer system. You could probably say that if they're a thousand feet away from it, they're required to hook up to that system, rather than trying to be on the road system, or if, um.
Yeah, if it runs down their street, they have to use it.
And it has to maybe follow, or if someone's doing a modified leach system, it has to be a certain distance away, and things like that. But that's all stuff I'd have to go over to the public comment, because that seems to contradict today with what the whole rulemaking is supposed to be about. And then you may not establish alternative criteria that are less restrictive, we use that term, less restrictive, then they. And then you may not establish alternative criteria that are less restrictive, we'll use that term, less restrictive, than the requirements of 3B4, which is the.
Water wastewater?
Yeah. No, section 3B4 is. Yeah, water and wastewater, for the approval for dwelling units, only in circumstances in which the municipality would be able to provide a variance pursuant to state laws. So you can be less restrictive on water and wastewater requirements.
Why would you want to do that?
That's a good question.
The kitchen possibly rips out.
Maybe that's a better choice.
Then I kind of worry a little bit about the water requirements, because all the town requires right now is just a letter from a well driller, and when they've been checking, they'll just write a letter. So I wonder if we want to require a geologist to check, or what's the standard well production that is enough to sustain the unit? How many, but a good point, but I guess what I'm saying is, our, our ordinance says that they need to provide a, a letter from a well driller saying that there's adequate water, that's all it says. So the well driller writes a letter that says there's adequate water in that area for this subdivision. And you don't know if that's really true, especially if you're gonna do these big, I think we should. The unit add in there, that we need a geologist to look at it, or produce a whatever.
Flow rate?
A flow rate, per unit, a minimum flow rate. Right, a geologist will check the, the wells in the area and all that kind of stuff, too.
And then how the units can maintain that flow rate if they're all being used?
Yeah.
So is there any other questions on the dwelling units section before we move on to the accessory requirements?
Is that the only place where municipal implementation is?
Um.
No, it's in other places.
Yeah.
I can wait, that might, I wish to.
So what is the difference between a dwelling unit and an accessory dwelling unit?
The minimum maximal lot size, that's pretty much.
So then dwelling unit, you can have two accessories. And this, in an accessory dwelling unit, you can have one more.
And they give the definitions, it's dark, I call it too much. Dwelling unit is just any part of a structure which through sale or lease is intended for human habitation, including single-family, multifamily housing, condominiums, timeshares, apartments, or as accessory dwelling unit. Self-contained dwelling unit located if it's attached or detached from a single-family dwelling unit located on the same parcel. And then, get the site warrants.
So as long as you have a dwelling unit, you get two. Plus two.
Right.
Accessory, you only get plus one.
Right.
Doesn't that go against, when it says that there's an existing one, you can only add one more?
No, it says you can add two.
To have two, to have three?
It says you can add two here.
It did on the other page.
So, again, prior to, we should state it clearly.
Requirements, B.
And if you look in the guidance document, you'll have different pictures and flow charts to hopefully give an example of what they're looking for.
Okay, so the requirements, and then look at B. B, one G, where are, one B, three, one B? You get two units, if you have a, if you already have a housing unit, you get two units. That's if it does not contain an existing dwelling. No. B is if it does not contain an existing dwelling unit.
I'm sorry.
C.
Allow up to two dwelling units.
If a lot, if one C, if a lot contains one unit, you must allow up to two additional dwelling units. And C. What, you only make, it contradicts the three, so.
Is it typical, state it clearly?
I think we're, I think we're saying the same thing, agreeing that it's confusing.
How many people in Augusta voted on this? You think they understood it?
Fifty-two percent, at least.
It said we're being recorded, right?
It wasn't even rhetorical question, so, that's fine.
But, again, the guidance document, they gave us a bit back and forth, because when you look at the flow chart, it says, on land with one existing unit, up to two additional dwelling units. Which then says, choose one unit within or attached, or one unit detached or one of each. So it's still.
One of each is two.
Two, but then the other two are saying, you could have one unit within or attached, or you could have one unit detached.
Or one of each.
So if you've got a house, you can put somebody in the, you can build it on a attached apartment.
And you can have a separate building.
Correct.
Or you could have a separate building.
But you can't have three separate buildings, you can have two separate buildings.
If a lot contains two existing.
You summed it up well, here's my.
If a lot contains one dwelling unit, you must, a municipality must allow up to two additional dwelling units.
So.
The dwelling units may be detached from the existing structure, within the existing or where the age is working. You have to choose.
Yeah, give up.
Two, and you can pick from the menu items.
Right, I'm just saying, what he just read is confusing, because it says you can either have one that's attached, one that's not attached, and one that's not attached, or one that's attached, or one that isn't attached.
Or one of each.
Or one of each.
It's, we're gonna keep going circles on this, this is something that I just have to have to.
And you've got your questions, and you're gonna ask all of it, all that stuff, and circle back to this.
And after the meeting, feel free to send me a list that you would like to have relayed over to the state, and D E C D also does have their own, the box on the website, where you can submit your own questions if you'd like to do that directly.
Right, and I'm hoping that we can sort of relate to you tonight, right, guys?
Right.
All of our questions, so that you have that all together, and it sounds like you've been working with other towns, and our questions are their questions, so what we're asking is not new.
Yep, that's why I.
But yeah, if anyone thinks of any in-between now, and then, and want to relay it over, just send them to me, and I can get them to Max, and we'll take care of it.
So, accessory dwelling units? Out of curiosity, does the town have a growth cap requirements?
For what, growth cap?
Growth cap, where you restrict the number of buildings that may be permitted in the town.
No.
In a town, no.
No, okay, no, no, so we don't have to worry too much, man, about a part of this. So we've gone over the definition already. Uh, and they, the state decided to cover their bases by saying that accessory dwelling unit may be constructed only within the existing dwelling unit, attached to or sharing the wall with a single-family dwelling unit, or has a completely new structure on the lots for the primary purpose of creating an accessory dwelling unit. Anyway.
Basically, yeah. Or maybe.
What restricts accessory dwellings, municipality's zoning ordinances, and the spell, without zoning ordinances, must apply the following conditions. At least one accessory dwelling unit must be allowed anywhere, any lot where a single-family dwelling unit is the primary, is the principal structure.
We have that covered.
Other structures, accessory to allow uses is permitted everywhere, except for the source protection.
Yep, so, as I say, some towns already have this.
That's done.
If more than one accessory dwelling unit has been constructed on a lot as a result of the allowance, the lot is not eligible for any additional increases in density, except allowed by the municipality. So, as I said, if, so your one acre lot size minimum. If you have your principal structure, let's ignore the other dwelling items, which is the one here. If you have the principal structure, and someone wants to build an accessory unit, or accessory dwelling unit, they don't need another acre for that accessory dwelling unit, it's just done. They'll get whatever permit you want, but it's no additional density, nothing like that. But if they do it, they have that accessory dwelling, and then they say, well, I want to have another accessory dwelling, then you can slap them with another acre requirement.
But it says here that you can have two.
Again.
I'm just saying, man, but it's.
I know, but that's, that's why I'm saying it's, it says it allows two, if you have the principal building, if it's some principal building that's not the accessory dwelling, and this is why I said the maximum requirement is important. If, if I come to town, and I have my one unit already, and I get to do the two additional ones, and I want to build two 3,000 square foot houses, I can say that they're just accessory dwelling units. And I only have to worry about one density requirement, but if you have a limit of.
Square footage.
Square footage of like 800, then you can't just say, well, they'll, once you have that maximum limit, you can say, those aren't accessory dwellings as defined by us, so those are principal ones, so you can only take one, or whatever the requirement's on. But accessory dwelling units, they do get that one exemption. So that's why the maximum size, then, is very important.
What are you, what are you seeing towns wanting to use as maximum size? Anywhere like.
Some towns are doing 750, because that's an oval home, some towns doing a little bit more than that.
I see, yeah. Is that footprint, or is that like two stories together?
Of.
Is it footprint, or is it?
Living space.
Living space.
Living space. That having a vertical porch in that living space?
Or deck, or patio?
They don't really say if it's a living structure, huh?
So they want to clarify that, too, then, size and.
Right.
And the space.
And some towns are taking into consideration the tiny homes that are going on.
Right.
Because those have to be allowed anywhere a single family is ours, so some people are gonna look at that five hundred.
Yeah, okay. Just something to shoot for.
What the size is is really up to you, I just strongly recommend a half one.
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense.
Hopefully it'll make it less confusing when dealing with accessory versus regular dwellings.
So if you set that size at 750, and someone brings in a 500 foot tiny home, you're saying we have to love the tiny homes?
Right.
Again, that's double talk.
Well.
What's max, it's the maximum, it's our maximum, so you can't put three, 3,000 square foot homes on a lot.
Right, an accessory dwelling unit is.
It's the max.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, no, 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 I'm sorry, I was, I knew what.
It's just that, it's just the maximum.
So you don't have the maximum.
A maximum size and maximum units, so the minimum is what?
One ninety?
It's one ninety, so the minimum's one ninety, so you can make a maximum of.
Two hundred.
No, I mean, you can put a maximum of eight hundred. A thousand, if you wanted to, but it keeps from.
Keeps from having three acres, three acres on, two acres of land.
Well, and they can be attached, so you've got a 3,000 square foot house, and you add another 3,000 square foot accessory unit to it with a breezeway, and if there's enough room, I guess.
It doesn't even have to be attached?
And it doesn't have to be attached, so it just, it's.
Someone can get their mega mansion somewhere on the water if they want to.
Well, shoreline zoning kicks in.
Right.
Yeah, not in the 75, but.
Right. Outside the shoreline, though, so.
I think they forgot about the rural.
They did.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, I forgot the what?
The rural.
Yeah.
We don't have the transportation, we don't have.
I think, I think the assumption in this, again, assumption, was that some cities and suburb towns that should have these types of rules, aren't going to do it. But this one-size-fits-all on the rural, they're hoping more than anything, you don't see an uptick in permits. Because who's gonna build so many houses out in a place that doesn't have sewer and water, is there the?
Or transportation.
Or transportation.
But, but, if they said you only had to have eight parking spaces for.
Twelve units.
Twelve units. It can't, we can be more strict, and so you have to have 12, is that not more strict, or less restricted? Less lean, less thingy, but isn't it so?
Strict, let's stick with strict. You can be, you can be less strict, but you can't be more strict, so you can't have one parking space per unit, it has to be two.
I thought we could be more strict.
That's not a one-size-fits-all rule, it does not apply to this, L D, it applies to other things, we can be more strict, but those you can't be more strict.
Oh, okay, now I'm, now I'm realizing where the confusion was.
So you've always thought we can be more strict on our ordinance?
Right.
For shoreline zoning.
For all zoning.
For all, this is the case where.
Right, that's where we're going, we're more strict. So if we say you have to do one per unit, that's more strict than only eight to the builder?
Where I agree with this, no.
Alternative criteria is less restrictive than the above criteria. That's what this L D 2000.
So you have to allow more than one.
You can allow more, you can just stick with the minimum you have here.
So we are allowing more parking.
Yeah, that's.
Where I agree with this, you can't require more parking.
But I just, I just, I look at it as a disaster in the making, that.
Sure.
I know.
We're in trouble if someone comes in.
Yeah, because our streets are not wide enough some days to pass two cars alone, parked alone. What happened if the town had an ordinance that said, you must have at least one parking space per dwelling unit in the town? Then.
This is.
Is this overriding our traditional ordinance?
If, if they pass the affordable housing, then yes.
That's, does it work in so many ways, even for the, the.
Yeah.
And it's a property, that you, who's, you're, we'll have to figure a way.
But Portland deals with it all the time, and that's what they did, they definitely.
Right, because some people that don't have cars. Yeah, but this is.
Yeah, they said we have a parking problem, and so they require the homeowners to have parking for their parks.
So.
Two or three per unit or whatever, and this is to preempt that.
And.
To, to require more affordable.
Now I'm gonna throw some more gasoline on the fire, right? So, there is, I believe, in the accessory dwellings, there is. I know it's on there. Yes, an accessory dwelling unit may not be subject to any additional motor vehicle parking requirements beyond the parking requirements of the single-family dwelling unit on a lot where the accessory dwelling unit is located. So, you can't require an additional parking space for the accessory dwelling. It would just be, single-family, so it's a single-family home, and it's one accessory dwelling unit, and you only require one parking space for the single-family home, that possible, we have one required parking space.
If we don't require a number of parking spaces for a single-family home, which we don't, because it's usually a home, and they have a driveway, and they install as many parking spaces as they need.
Yep.
Then what do we need to start requiring parking, is parking at a single-family home? That's what I'm saying, if you, if we had, if we had an ordinance that said every unit, every residential unit in this town. You know.
No.
So, so I know we, for, for residential, we don't require that they have two spaces or anything. Home occupation, we require that there's enough spaces for the, just for an employee, and, and commercial, we have a parking, but for residential homes, there's nothing in there.
Right.
So is it a good idea to start requiring something, I mean?
I would probably put in just at least one for regular dwelling units, because even if you can't do it on the accessory, it gets back to the four units that can be done in an undeveloped spot, where someone can build four units.
Right.
And they're not going to be required to have any parking.
And we have no on-street parking in my head, so I said, then there's just.
Yeah.
But also, if someone were to develop a property with four units in it and no parking spaces.
That would be an interesting move.
They're not gonna be able to market it, so, it, I mean, I understand, like, protecting people, but.
You could look into traffic ordinance that just strictly prohibits on-street parking if you would like, just to save you on that.
That's a way to protect it.
That's actually a good idea.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to figure out, how do you protect it, so there's no on-street parking, because then you can't.
Then, then you'd have a problem with out-of-town worm diggers and.
Uh, I think.
You'd, you'd have to, you'd have to figure out some way to allow people to park.
It would probably have to be an hourly, based on certain hours rather than.
No on-street parking from 8:00 P M to 8:00 A M, but that's also not enforceable.
Why, you also.
The sheriff's department's not gonna take it, you call it.
In a snowstorm, do you want people parking?
Right.
You know, then the tow trucks can't get through, so it's, it's a disaster.
I mean, there's, there's, well, but this is, this is, this is a disaster in the making.
Yep.
If we don't have our corner on.
Yeah, it is.
But how much do you get done by 20 hours, so we really need that.
Well, so, so then, what are, so I guess, well, let's finish the review. Well, so, so then, what are, so I guess, well, let's finish the review. Let's talk about what we think are the things that we need to implement As a town.
Um
Can you overturn the law? And establish, establish a size of community?
Oh, I mean, that's something where it's an act of legislature at this point.
I know, but
And that's why, I, I don't know if you were here when I said at the beginning, but please call your representative or senator and tell them about this, because that's
Oh, yes, I will.
Because they do need to hear this.
So what else have we got on that?
Um, for accessory dwellings, let's see. Uh, they'll have to meet with water and wastewater items that everyone else has to address. Um, you can have more permissive dimensional requirements for accessory dwelling, so, you know, a hundred square foot minimum.
Are you on the size?
Yeah.
Size now, okay.
I'm on the size, um
Says we can set a maximum, so that's good.
You can set a maximum.
Water and wastewater is the same as in the droughts?
Yep. And then municipal implementation is the same, where you can be more permissive. You can establish an application process for accessory dwelling units. And you may create, create alternative criteria that is less restrictive
Than the above.
Than the above section here. Uh, and then there's this rate of growth ordinance, so
And we don't have that, right?
No, and that is just saying you limit how many structures can be built in the town in a certain year. But this is saying that an accessory dwelling unit would not count towards that rate of growth.
But this is not applied to us because we do not have that, and we don't have to implement it because it's here, correct?
So you do not have to do a growth ord, yeah, growth ordinance is, it's not a link, it's a completely separate thing.
Right.
Um, so you don't have to worry about that. And, um
Oh, yes.
Well, that was easy, huh?
You guys, yeah, I know, don't keep me anymore, I like them all.
So I read in some of the literature that there are grants out there to help municipalities maneuver through this
Five thousand dollars, actually.
With this, correct?
Twenty-five thousand and fifty thousand. I forget what the criteria is.
Yep, there is certainly grant money. Available now.
It's not, it's not, why?
Because they, because by the same time they're setting up this rulemaking, they're just putting up the rulemaking for the grant writing, which is not been approved yet. Through the Attorney General's for that process.
Okay, so this has to be done by June, which means everybody has to have this implemented by April first at the very latest, and the grant money is not available yet. But it will be later afterwards, it's supposed to be done.
Maybe.
So it'd be like a reimbursement grant.
Maybe on that.
That's part of the questions I have to ask.
So people, here's what we see, this is interesting though, so it's housing opportunity grants. The housing program has grant funding available to the, to financial services providers and municipalities with municipal ordinance development. Doesn't say it has to be for this. So we can put that towards our entire ordinance development. Just saying.
That would be good.
And community housing, I mean, the development D E C D is responsible for not being able to administer the grant funding once the rulemaking process is completed, and then solicit applications for grants. So
So there's grant money.
I look at that as because of what we've got on the traffic loan for us, this is an opportunity for us to get a grant For our next phase after the con plan.
Right.
Right. Just a thought. I saw that printed out here.
Yeah. Yeah. So to wrap this up, maybe, do you guys have more questions for Max?
I have a couple.
Aside from how are we gonna get this done?
I, I have a couple, yeah. The, uh Public hearing, is that gonna be in person as well as, uh
Yep, in person.
Because the notice says only a Zoom.
There should be an in-person option.
This public hearing will be held by Zoom, it says. But will there be a room that I got so that
I thought I saw both, actually.
Yeah, I, because I've had to talk with, um, the two people at D C with Hamlet, I They did say it was gonna be hybrid, but, um, I
Okay.
I guess I can check in about that.
Well, I'm just, I mean, if it's If you're testifying, it's much easier in person than on Zoom, but I think they have a bigger impact here. And you were planning to attend this in person?
Uh, yes. But if it's only on Zoom, then I'll have to
So in, in some cases, whether there's been issues in municipalities surrounding a development law, has he been able to put on a moratorium?
Of course.
For us, they put on a six-month moratorium.
Sorry.
Is that an option for us to put on a six-month moratorium?
What would the goal be to, six-month moratorium to hold this off?
Right.
The state's requiring it by July one.
Right.
The state would allow that.
Right, that would probably be, um
That's my conclusion, but I thought I'd throw it out.
So
I mean, this is state law.
Right.
It, it's, um
The only way that we would, I think, be able to maneuver that as a size of our community, perhaps.
So part of that would probably come down to Maybe talking with the attorney first, for your town, because With, with this having a July first deadline, There are some legal questions that people have raised about, one, the towns being required to have something More strict than what they would want to implement, not having the grant funding, and this tight deadline. And not even being allowed to do a moratorium because you feel you need more time to do it.
Yeah, well, we definitely do, I think, in this town, and I, I would, I think, it's pretty difficult.
If we, if we were nervous, I'm not saying we should do this, but we could just adopt the maximum size as a hundred and ninety-one square feet, and it would eliminate it.
For accessory dwellings.
Right.
I'm not saying we should do that, but that's a nuclear option.
And I would at least And that would at least help with the accessory dwelling, I guess, probably.
Is, um Is that something that you're willing to talk to Sally about, as far as a moratorium or not? If we're able, if we're able to do that, if you could reach out or whichever, to her, um
And I know you're already crossing off the growth cap ordinance item, but that would be something you could look at, because you're already giving the nuclear option on the accessory dwelling. I might as well throw in the hydrogen law, so for the growth, for the growth cap, that would be Because the principal units would have to be allowed, but you could put a growth cap ordinance saying You can only build X number of units within a certain year, so then with accessory dwellings, so, addressed, You're not prohibiting them from being done, but you are limiting how many could be built here.
So anyone who has the same structure can still add one, if they've had it.
They could have the one accessory dwelling unit, but they can't, but like for the undeveloped area in the growth cap, they can't do four units.
So that, all that would do would stop multifamily, someone coming in with a twenty unit
It wouldn't stop, it wouldn't, it wouldn't stop the multifamily, it would stop the single, uh, housing, but the four single family homes being built on one lot throughout the entire town.
But it wouldn't stop like a big development like Green Acres or something.
Correct. They have to, they'd have to address four or five different big standards.
And, and I think I'm not sure that that's really what we want to do. It's just a timeframe in that we're not really feeling prepared for this. So I liked the moratorium idea better, so we can I, I don't think that we're trying to stop or, I don't think we're trying to stop development. I think we're just trying to be Con, correct, conscientious and proactive about it and be prepared to lose it, correct, and we don't make mistakes.
Right.
And I think that that's fair.
Well, I think, yeah, that's true. The other thing is that in, in the town, there's a lot of people, I think, that wanted it to remain rural. Hence the reason for the three-acre zoning.
Right.
And this changes that considerably.
Mm-hmm.
So
But that's the state intent.
That, yes.
Oh, no, oh, yes.
Let him finish.
But the challenge is to, if we want to try and keep that rural atmosphere, you know, how do we do that? Do we go to five-acre zoning, or ten-acre zoning, or
According to this, though, it doesn't matter how many acres you have.
It's two and a half units per acre.
Oh, wait, hold on.
Yeah, so this is a whole nother conversation, but I just want to get that idea out there about the rural, trying to keep the rural aspect.
Right, and just to quickly come back, because I think we're crossing some wires here on standards, so that two-point-five, that's only for the affordable housing one. If they do the covenant, if they're in a growth area, and it allows multifamily. So most of the rural area isn't applicable to this two-point-five density, it's just that And they're not, the rural area isn't in a growth area, so it would only be the two unit, two, three units. And even then, they still have to have the same acres per unit, other than for one accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
So if you have your maximum size of the two hundred square feet, one unit, nuclear option. And someone wants to do, build two units, both two thousand square feet, you said three acres is the rule.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they still have to require, you still require six acres for those two to be built.
But one could be an accessory unit.
If one's an accessory unit, it would only be three.
So you're, we're not eliminating accessory unit.
Right.
We're just eliminating, we're We're eliminating because it's a certain
Okay, so I think I'm confused then.
Yeah, I am too.
Because
I don't think we're gonna straighten out time.
No.
We're gonna remain confused. I think that's out of the deal tonight.
I think I'll
But to, to move on a little bit beyond that part of that, that one lot, let's say it's three acres or two acres. And somebody builds a, an accessory unit
Yes.
On. Now, is that just, is that gonna be rented out? I mean, what if, let's say Jim Smith wants to sell just the accessory unit now, can they do that?
Yeah.
It's, if that tie didn't
Right.
But if it, if it doesn't have its own lot, I think it's really tough to sell it.
No, they can do a condo.
They can do a condo, yeah, but then they don't own the land, they just own building.
But then does that become acceptable?
How's that gonna work? Have, you know.
No, because it's two on the lot, it's subdivision three.
And here's why I also bring up the short-term rentals from earlier. The state didn't include anything on short-term rentals, so someone can just make some accessory dwellings and then build them short-term rentals.
Right, and we have to have short-term rental ordinance.
We do not.
It's true.
So that's the loophole some people have noticed, they get ready for.
But we can't
It's on YouTube, so
And even if we were to go to five acres, I believe the current lots right now are grandfathered in, so if that's
Right, it's a conformal
If it's, if it's a conforming lots of eight, three acres, and we go to a five-acre minimum, those are gonna be acceptable three-acre lots anyway, so we're just penalizing
They'll, they'll become conform, they'll be non-conforming three-acre lots, like everything to five.
Which is just gonna make it messier.
Yeah.
It's gonna make it worse.
Oh, it's gonna be less.
But when you're grandfathered in, so you still be able to do what this allowed you to do, it's not gonna stop that.
So you have a question.
So the last thing was, um, what about looking at fifty-five plus senior housing? How does that play into this?
I mean, um
Could we require that these, some of these units be fifty-five plus? As a, as a municipality?
That's a great question.
That's an interesting one. I actually haven't been asked that before. Right.
Is it, is it Roll into affordable, and it's affordable with this fifty-five plus restricted type of thing?
I think that was, I think, I have a very, I have a somewhat similar question, where someone's asked like, what can the covenant
Senior housing is automatically affordable. That's right.
No, I, I, I didn't mean that. I meant, could they do it underneath the section that says affordable housing, and then just dictate that Only fifty-five and older could live there.
So I have been asked a similar question, if the covenants for the affordable housing could include some benefits for the town, like, you know, Local residents or employees or something like that, but I can see on each requirement if that's something that can be required. Um, I, the response I might get is, you can, but it would have to be, you provide an additional incentive, like Two-point-five is for everyone, but if it's fifty-five or older, then you could do three for
Due to the, the unit capacity?
It might be that. I'd have to, it's a public comment question.
Right, yeah. The benefit would be to have more fifty-five and older, which then is, is a less strain on the school system, so there's a pro on that.
Department.
Also.
That's gauge discrimination too.
Fifty-five and older?
If we, if we target older people as desirable residents, I think that that Is not, it, it is not right, let's just say.
But there are covenants for fifty-five and older communities, that is.
And they're generally not affordable.
Well, the town is not going to be soliciting anybody really for anything. It's just an option for developers to have different things in town. But if they got an extra, if they could build more, if they made it fifty-five and older, they got more units to build, which would then make it more affordable in theory, right, if they had any more. Um, but then it's a restriction of age, which is not, it's But it's not in here super, got a good question to ask them.
Yeah, it's a very good question, because that's an interesting point where there are some grants and incentives outside of what we're doing right now, like through HUD and everything, That do give financial incentives to create fifty-five older housing. But at the same time, the state doesn't want you to be discriminating against anyone. And to that point, it could be each discrimination. So it's a very interesting loaded question that I now get to spring from the state.
They're gonna love that. Still gonna love that.
I guess it debates the dust, though.
Uh, what's a shame is that I do actually like the people who work at D E C D, and they're just being caught in at the worst time. Like, they, they are very nice people. The ones who are just giving me the rulemaking and saying, this is what it is, they're the messengers that I have to shoot at.
Well, they didn't, the legislature did not allow enough time for the adjustment.
No.
It's, it's way too short a, a deadline. And that's just that.
So I guess you guys should talk about, you know, if we, what is the maximum? Or just some of the criteria.
Square footage, you mean?
Yeah, if we have to, if we plan, you know, do you want to plan for a mandate that we have to roll out on July one, or if so, start making those Thoughts on what do you want as an maximum size, what do you want as this, so that we have, or moving forward if we have to.
Right, we need some more workshops and set some dates. Have, has the selectmen set the dates for Drop dead to be into the warrant, to be on the warrant? Because usually when that whole calendar thing comes out, there's a date, and it has to be ready for the warrant.
Well, I don't know, we know. The calendar hasn't been determined yet, I believe that
If it hasn't been determined yet, that's, that's fine.
We initially
He said weeks before town meeting to be published in the Town report, which is
Which means
Yeah.
Four weeks before that.
I thought, we said the meeting, when is the town meeting?
May sixteen.
But that's not to say that you can't have a special town meeting on June first. Stand on this for this.
I think it's July first, isn't it? Probably have to end this
We have to have this in place by July first.
Okay.
And the town
Meeting.
Meeting is May sixteen. And they have to have the warrant in Weeks before that, but we have to be done even weeks before that, because it has to go through Sally. Well, fortunately, they're legal, so I was just trying to back it up. Um, and I'm thinking That, Max, you're gonna go, and that meeting was March first, right? So that's like in a week and a half next week?
What's March first?
The, the Zoom meeting.
Yes, yes.
Or you might get more answers that would help us out, so, um, is it Okay, if
Deadline of March thirteenth for all public comments.
Oh, and then after that, they may change things, right?
They may tweak things, or try and make something a little more clear.
All right.
We'll go from mud to dust.
So
But Sally probably
I think has this
Right, right, but I mean Sally isn't gonna help us with what we are, with process. But, I mean, but in theory, the ordinance is more or less written from a legal perspective. More or less.
And
Correct, but trying to figure out where all this is in this book is gonna take some time and adjusting it, so, yeah, this is written, but This is not fixed, so
Is that something I, is that something you need to just flag working to be inserted?
Yes. Um I think Well, I guess it's actually up to the selectmen, because technically Max is not working on the ordinance yet, and he was nice enough to come here tonight. Um, it's, um, it's actually Um, it's, um, contractually, whatever, what the three of you want to do.
Can you have an amendment in the ordinance, can you have an official amendment until it's intertwined in the sections?
Could you have this?
No, I think it's gonna contradict, Carly was up.
Well, I'm just wondering what your recommendation is, if you think that we should hold off until after March sixteenth, when the legislature, I mean, should we, is your recommendation that we hit the ground running as soon as possible with these edits, and then react as the legislature changes? Loaded question.
Yeah.
I was, I was kinda like, eh, I don't know if I should ask that, but.
Well, I mean, a lot of this has to go in, and we can start, and then we'll know what we'll have to adjust if the legislature, for some reason, changes anything. I, I would hate to wait a month, because we're two months behind now. I'm worried about that, I don't know how the guys feel about it, but.
I would say, and this might be something you can have, uh, maybe a select board member, or a town administrator, or someone who does, or I might be doing it anyways. Talk with the local representative, just see if there is something in the works right now, I might not be, I might be out of the loop, but whoever's representing the area might know something. And if they say, well, we are working on an amendment to do this, this, and that, then it might not be rushed. I can certainly flag it, um, I can talk with my boss about where that would fall into the contract, because you do have a contract on it, and then the ordinance ain't based, so.
Right.
And it doesn't take too much time for me to flag these items, it's just me reading, the ordinance at least wants to see what's needed.
And I don't understand why, yeah, I mean, you couldn't reach out to her representative yourself if you're comfortable with that, because I think that dialogue between you and her may give you a better idea of what she's thinking, what you're thinking.
Right.
It always helps for any person.
But I, I think.
I mean, having us do it, and I don't think we should be talking to.
Because you gave a telephone, yeah.
Right, so I think you talk to her directly.
Why, see, some of the time it gets to you, it's the wrong message. Oh, yeah, it, I think what you're talking about is just
Yeah, just.
voicing concern and saying, we don't have enough time, and I don't know if they're gonna listen to a planning board chair over a town.
Do you vote?
Town.
Do you vote? Everybody who runs for election pays attention to people who vote, and everyone here should be calling, um, Allison and Eloise and saying, this is not fixing.
But then we already, assuming, like, Max said, they may already have some amendments that they're working on, that may.
And she may have some advice we'd slow it down speed, yeah.
Right, so I think you, you guys are gonna talk to Sally about moratorium, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, ask about the moratorium.
And I think you should re, I think anyone in this room should be reaching out to Allison and Eloise.
So you're gonna ask her on go fifty-five plus also?
Well, that's a public comment thing, yeah.
Okay.
We'll do that.
Yep, gonna ask about that.
Okay, so that's an option for the town, I think, too.
And then, um, I'm worried about waiting, I.
Could you give us, um, Max, maybe like, three or four things that we could try and, so I can tie down, I mean, one of the things you said was the area, the maximum area.
Right.
We should, we should probably come up with a number for that, right?
Yeah, whatever number you all feel comfortable about, something that won't easily be abused, but something you can see as a good benefit for the town.
So that's one thing we could do, what, what's another?
Well, the definition, I would think, would be easy enough to go through and to check, and I've marked up a couple of things that you already mentioned today.
Okay.
We need to change, um, are you guys willing for Max to take a look to the ordinance and flag some things?
I think that's a great idea.
And I'll, again, I'll talk with my boss just to see if it all falls into the technical assistance, or the contract, or whatnot, it's recovered, I do weigh, so, let's just see where that falls under.
Okay.
And you have a copy of the most recent?
Ordinance?
Yeah.
It's on your website, correct?
Yes.
Yep, it is.
Um, what was the thing? Parking, parking seems to be the thing you should have addressed, even if it's just for the presidential, or just any use for tires. One apartment is amazing, fine, um. Shoot, it was one thing. Um. What were the things you, you said, there was the housing, there was the age, there was the.
I can't remember the questions.
Moratorium.
Moratorium.
Uh, what happens when a unit sells?
Transfer a unit, does it go to a company?
You know, if it's, I know, if it's.
Oh, um, ma, make sure you have a process for planning boards to go for multifamily.
Yes, yep, I had, I had an application.
Add it down to the air, and then we need to add an application, um, so I think if you've got the hearing, and you can talk to Sally, and Max is gonna look over this to flag it, we as a group can do a bunch of the other stuff, we just need to set up some meetings and do some workshops in here. And did you also wanna create like a flow rate for water, something for the?
There is something in here, there was something in the back that you might wanna detect, if you need the well, yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of those contacts, I can create some of the cherry back.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about how that's gonna be done.